I'll make that motion.
I'm certain.
Please? All in favor?
Yeah.
Carrie, do I need this mic on? Can everybody hear me?
Uh huh.
I'm gonna turn it off then.
I'd prefer if you left it on, please.
Would you?
It's really hard to get the audio on that.
Okay. Okay, so we have no petitions or delegations tonight. We will move on to item number three, which is approval of the minutes of March 21st. And you've got those in front of you. Is there any errors or omissions? If not, then we have a motion to accept them as circulated.
I'm certain.
Please, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Carrie. Business arising and reports from previous meetings. The first item is the conflict of interest policy that was tabled at the last meeting. As I said at the last meeting, this is one of the commitments that the board made to the landowners was to clearly define conflict of interest. It's been reviewed by legal counsel and I appreciate a motion to accept it as circulated.
I'll make that.
Please.
I'll start.
Okay, Bruce, is there any discussion? I don't see discussion on the board.
Very straightforward.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. So, Ruth, do you think you can get this on to the website before the AGM?
I can do it parting with the good.
That would be good, thank you. Okay, the next item I want to report on to the crowd is we had a planning meeting at the board on March 23rd. The purpose of the planning meeting was to talk about the annual general meeting and decide how we were going to handle that. We also talked about the Public Works capital planning project and have agreed to a preliminary table of contents for that document. So then Bruce and his committee is working away at trying to fill it in. The other issue that we talked about was a bit of planning for the coming new term. In our strategic plan, we have identified that the fire department is going to become one of our priorities for this year. So we talked about how we were going to begin that process. And we'll be talking about that more at the AGM on Saturday. But our first step in beginning to look at the fire department and the issues facing the fire department is a series of workshops where we'll be soliciting input and feedback from the community and the fire department about defining what the service is, looking at organizational issues, and then looking at what kind of fire hall or building you might need and beginning to do some planning about that. So you'll hear more about that on Saturday. And then we had two more meetings about the water supply asset transfer and some discussions with the CBRD. Again, on Saturday, we're hoping to make an announcement about that issue. Those meetings have gone very well and we are moving along. Unless anybody wants to add anything else on these issues at this point. So 5A is an email that we got from Island Timberlands. We met with them about a month ago, maybe five weeks ago.
You've been a little too busy.
Was it? Time flies. To begin talking to them about purchasing a piece of property for the permanent water treatment plant. And we began, we looked at maps and have kind of tentatively selected a piece of property. And then they indicated that what needed to happen to initiate the process was a letter from us saying that we were interested and then they would start the ball rolling. So this email basically is in response to our letter to them saying that we're interested in that property. The property that we're looking at is about 18 acres. It's up near the highway. And they have identified that we're going to have to pay for it. And we'll begin a process of getting a value on the land and looking at issues related to that before we sit down and start negotiating about what that actually will be. So we don't have to do anything about this at this point.
No, it's just to advise the board that they have responded now to our expression of interest and they've given us the list of items that they will need to ascertain before we can move forward.
Yeah. So that's a good sign. The second piece of correspondence we have is a letter from Jerry and Barb, Jerry Sandel and Barb Murphy. I better not say Barb Sandel.
No, thank you. I could read it if you wish.
We don't normally read them out.
Okay.
But essentially what they're asking us to consider is to have a town hall meeting to inform the community about the issues around the water transfer issue. And that that be done prior to an agreement being signed, I guess. Yeah. As a board, we have, I mean, this is the first we've seen this, so...
Yes, I understand.
If I'm speaking out of turn, I'm sure you'll let me know. I think we're probably too far down the road because we have reached a tentative agreement already. Our intention is on Saturday to talk to people about the position that we've taken, why we've taken that position, and to announce that we do have a tentative agreement. And that there will be a board meeting, a special board meeting called early in May to actually make that agreement public and to approve that agreement. And then we'll follow with kind of a joint announcement after that. So for people that were at the meeting last month, we spent quite a bit of time talking about why we've taken the position that we have. So I don't know what you'd like to do about this today, if you just want to table it until after Saturday, or what you want to do.
Well, I agree, I think it's a bit too late to have any bearing on water transfer. However, we've still got a lot of other items coming down the line regarding our infrastructure agreement. And I like the idea of a town hall meeting. I'd like to see them on more regular places with something without having the structure of a board meeting and maybe moderated by a different person, where people can express their views freely. I like the idea. Because if any time people are not informed as to what goes on, it creates fertile ground for suspicion, conspiracy theories, kinds of other things. So I'd like, I would really like to see everything brought out in the open, the more the better.
Well, Saturday, not a town hall meeting? The AGM?
I guess you could call it a town hall meeting, but it's going to be more structured. And I don't know, it's going to obviously be controlled by the board. Whereas I think a town hall meeting that is not controlled by the board, where we're just part of the crowd and maybe called upon to answer a question or something, people I think will be more inclined to express other ideas and opinions.
Well, what we could do on Saturday is throw that out to people there and try and get a sense of whether the community is interested in that and...
It's their meeting after all.
...plan something after that.
It is their meeting. It's the group's meeting, it's not the board's meeting, isn't it?
Right.
So let's put it out to them at that point in time.
And her...
Add it as an agenda item.
And see what sort of things they want meetings about. Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We'll see what occurs from there.
Do you want to consider a kind of a timeline on that, like a date? Do you want to be suggesting anything, or...
Well, it's hard to do right now. I mean, we've already got some dates planned for fire committee stuff, so...
We could talk about that on Saturday, too.
Well, we could, yeah, see what people think and go from there.
And then if we need to do a more formal response to Jerry and Barb, we can do that after Saturday.
One of the difficulties that we have, too, is that when you're engaged in negotiations with another party, they have the expectation that you are going to keep those negotiations confidential. And so as much as we could have town hall meetings to discuss what it is the community wants to see in an agreement, we would have a lot of difficulty talking about an agreement in advance of signing it. That creates all sorts of issues with respect to what the other party's expectations are of us. And then, and what we've been doing in the last couple of months, I think, is building a level of trust that what simply wasn't there before with the regional district. And it's, I think it's gone quite well, but we...
For some of us.
Well, with one exception. But it's problematic if you start taking it to the community in advance of signing it. It may create more problems than it resolves. But it's good to know what the community wants and what their expectations are, and then it's the job of the board to enter into the agreement and to try to put those things into an agreement.
I don't think it's, anything that is obviously confidential needs to be brought out. And if a question is asked whether the answer would violate any confidentiality, they can come right up and say, sorry, we can't answer this because we're doing this negotiation or that negotiation. But I think people would appreciate a broad outline. And there's a lot of smaller details that we could give them that are not confidential. And I think the more, the more people are informed about what we're doing, the more comfortable they'll feel.
Since November, I think Carol has repeatedly given the community a report on what the board's position is with respect to the water license transfer. So that's about as much as we can say, really.
See, I think some of the issue is that as a board, it's taken us six months with an average of probably three meetings a week for the past six months for us to understand the issue and for us to figure out all the different government departments, all of the legislation, all of the kind of nuance that's involved, which would be very difficult to kind of educate the community on to the point where the entire community could then make an informed decision. And I think part of why we've been elected is because the community has given to us the job to represent them. So, I mean, it's one thing to kind of inform people as much as we can, to try and get feedback from the community, the buck stops here and at some point we need to make a decision, right? That doesn't mean we can't talk about it or give as much information as possible.
And once it's done, then as you said on Saturday, you're going to make an announcement and give the information. And we will make the final announcement when it's completely signed.
Yeah. So, and once the board actually approves the agreement, I mean, it's public, the entire agreement. So then we can certainly talk about all the specific clauses that are in the agreement and what that will mean for the community. I think the other issue that you're talking about, though, Cleve, is the water infrastructure agreement and the community having a better understanding of what that means.
Well, that wouldn't hurt to get a bit more information of that, I think.
Yeah, yeah. And we could certainly do that.
I think the more we can put out, the better. You know, without, as I said, breaching anything that's confidential, we don't, obviously don't have to do that. But the more information we put out, the more comfortable people feel.
Okay, so we'll wait till after Saturday and we'll see what people think of the agreement on Saturday. Okay? Okay. Reports. Ruth is going to combine her administration and financial report.
So we're now through the audit process and the board has had a chance to review the auditor's report and financial statements, and they're going to be approved tonight. From my perspective as administrator, it's always good to get through the first year-end cycle because it's a useful tool to ensure we're keeping our financial records in good order and it helps me to find the areas that may need attention. We had a new auditor this year and so it was a fresh start for both of us. The audit process seemed to go quite well from my point of view. They spent less time in the office doing the audit than they had originally planned for. And in the course of the audit, we developed some new Excel spreadsheets for our tangible capital assets, which will make it easier to track UBIT's infrastructure as it ages and needs replacement. When they gave me our adjusting entries for year-end, we had 11 entries to make, which means the books only need adjusting for capital amortization and amounts received either before or after year-end but needing to be recognized in the concrete period. So this essentially means that the books are found to be relatively error-free. In their management letter, they identified two areas where we need to improve our processes and that's, that's pretty good in most audits, to only have two areas that are in need of cleanup. So I'm currently putting in place the processes they recommended to ensure amounts are correctly recorded and posted to the appropriate accounts. And I expect now that we've done it once, it should get easier next year. Based on how this year went, the auditor said they're happy to continue with doing the job, the fee and on the basis quoted in their contract that we entered into last fall. This will only change if we begin to see significant growth in our jurisdiction with significant add-ons to our revenues and infrastructure with more audit work for them as a result. But for now, we have some certainty about what to expect for next year's audit expense. The audit this year cost us less than half what our previous auditor charged us for the 2010 audit as a result of us working with our other local improvement districts to get a group rate for all of us. So that concludes my report.
Any questions for Ruth? I have a motion to accept her report for information. I'll make that motion.
I'm certain.
All in favor?
Yes.
Carrie? Anne? Okay. There was no fire rescue committee meeting in April as the repairs to the hall have done, all now been identified. The drainage work around the building, which was done just before the heavy winter rains began, has alleviated the water issue inside. Asphalt paving on the parking lot was completed in March. There is a repair needed to seal the area between where the addition meets the old building and some repairs that still need to be done. As Carol had told us before, a series of focus groups comprised of community and committee members, the board, and the fire department will obtain input regarding service levels such as jaws of life, home suppression, and highway response to MVAs. As well, we will begin discussions around a new fire hall, new big complex, and fundraising for that building. The first focus group is planned for June and hopefully we'll have two more during the year. The fire chiefs reported that the department responded to three incidents since last month. They include one smoke scare, one chimney fire, and one burning fireplace. This weekend, coming up, six firemen are attending hazardous materials awareness training and two other members are attending an S T A R T course on April 21st. That course trains members on self-rescue from burning structures. Four other members have recently completed their first responder recertification course in Oyster River in Cumberland. Two members will be taking a transition course from first responder to co-AT level three. This will allow them to be members of a structural protection team in case of an interface fire in the community. There's currently no ban on open fires in the coastal fire area, but one is anticipated and made. And that concludes my report. Thank you. Any questions for Anne? I have a motion to accept her report for information.
Make your motion.
Allen? Seconder?
Yes, second.
Bruce? All in favor? Carrie? Okay, Cleve?
The Public Works Committee met on the 5th of April. It was a fairly short meeting as there were no new issues or items to discuss. Superintendent Dan McGill was unable to attend and had submitted the monthly report in advance. And I'm happy to say all is going well in the Public Works world, with the only minor problem, our logs washed down with the heavy rain and flating against the doom, and these are being removed. Now that the monsoon season is nearly over, turbidity levels are slowly improving and are currently at around two NTUs. And this is still well within acceptable limits. All water samples have been negative. Comprehensive drinking water test was taken on March 19th. At the time of the meeting, no results had been received. And that concludes the report.
Any questions for Cleve?
Has the turbidity settled out down pretty much then?
The turbidity, it's come down from about 2.6 to just a tad over 2. So that will be improving as we stop getting these downfalls that we've been having before we had.
We have a motion to accept his report for information. I'll make that again. Seconder?
Yes.
Allen? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Okay, Bruce?
Finance Committee met in the boardroom April 13th. President with myself, Carol Gordonwood, Pam Ramsey, Pam Mountain, Cleve, and Ruth Soder, the administrator. The purpose of this meeting, or that meeting, was to review the audited financial statements for 2011 submitted by Myers, Norris, and Penny. Ruth conducted this review and fielded questions from the committee, and the recommendation was that although the committee was satisfied with the draft copy, the trustees should meet with the auditor for final review and acceptance. This meeting was scheduled for Monday, April 16th at 2:00 PM. And the trustees did meet with the auditors, reviewed the statements. As there were no significant corrections to be made, it was recommended that the 2011 audited financial statements be accepted at the next regular board meeting, which is tonight. And details of the audit will be provided to the landowners of the AGM on Saturday. And secondly, draft copies of the March financial statements were issued to the committee for their review and comments, which I have received back. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Any questions for Bruce? A motion to accept his report for information?
I'm certain.
Bruce and Allen? All in favor?
I thought you had a question.
And the bylaws policies and procedures report. So our committee met on March 27th with myself, John Whitman, and June Heenan, Bruce, Anne, and Allen, those trustees. The agenda was to deal with two draft policies. One is the meeting procedures bylaw and the other one relates to encounter meetings. Our committee went through their meeting procedure bylaw quite carefully and made some suggested changes. I think that's probably, you don't want to hear all the details about the wording changes evening. We also spent some time talking about an encounter meeting policy and have made some amendments to that. So both of those two drafts will be coming back to the committee for review again before they go to court. We also agreed to table two policies tonight, one on confidentiality and one on information privacy. And that concludes my report. Any questions? A motion to accept it for his information. Allen? Seconder?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Okay. So new business. In your package, you have some correspondence from the credit union who have asked to extend their existing lease, which expires on April 30th. And they have asked to extend the lease until at least December 31st. So what I need then would be a motion to extend the credit union lease at the current terms until December 31st.
I'll make that motion.
Cleve? Seconder?
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
I believe when I was speaking to Cindy at the credit union, I discussed that they're possibly having a 90-day notice period and I believe she agreed to that verbally, so if we would like, we could make that one of the terms, that they will give us 90 days notice of retention if they can.
Instead of 60?
Right.
Can we just tack that on to this motion or do you want a separate motion?
No, it can be part of the motion.
Okay, so you're okay with adding that on, Cleve? That we try to get a 90-day notice?
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? There's a ladder, staying for a while.
Keep it leasing. Keep it leasing.
All in favor? Carrie? The next issue, we've got it on here, is property assessment request relates to some of the conversation we had in our planning workshop on March 23rd where we were talking about options for the capital planning process and potential building and that kind of thing. And what we had talked about was it would be really helpful for us to have a clear sense of how much the property is valued at for two pieces of property. One is that little triangle piece that's on Macaws Road that is part of the fire department kind of allotment right now. And the other piece is the property that we're leasing from Transington for the water treatment plant right now. Right. So what we're looking for then is a motion to ask the... So what we're looking for then is a motion to ask the administration to get a market evaluation of those two pieces of property so that we have that information for future planning.
I'd like to make that motion, please. So I've done one up that says, "I'd like to make a motion to instruct the administrator to obtain written market evaluations on the properties on McLeod Road, one of which is owned by Ubid and the other of which is leased and where the current reservoir is located." So we can see that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Allen? Any discussion? It's hard to be able to plan if we have no sense of what, what the values of those properties are. And there'll be free evaluations. We'll get them from realtors through.
Through realtors, correct?
Yes.
For the audience too, we're looking at evaluations. We're not looking at appraisals, so we're not going to pay for this right now. We're looking for, trying to get an idea of market value. So we're going to ask a couple of realtors to give us an evaluation. So at this point in time, it's not going to cost us any money just to field it out and try and get an idea of what those properties are. Just to let you know, we're not wasting a bunch of money on appraisal, per se.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Allen did. So last month, we tabled two policies that I'd like to deal with tonight. First one is a confidentiality policy. Both of these policies are in a new section in the policy manual that we've called information management. And it will deal with things like how much we charge people to get copies of things. It's all the policies and rules that we think we need around how Ubid manages the information and data that it collects. So these are the first two. So the first one is confidentiality. It talks about the difference between privacy and confidentiality. So confidentiality refers to the information itself, and it tells you what the rules are around how you can collect information and use it and dispose it. Privacy deals with the administrative protections that you have to put in place to protect it once you have it. So you've had this for a while now. If there are no, well, I guess what we need is a motion to accept this as presented. Allen?
I'll second.
Cleve? Any questions or comments? I think we've been through it enough times.
I'd say comments again, I'd like to see those go on to our website.
But there hasn't been approved yet. This is just the table right now.
No, one cigar, I would like to see them go on there. I think they're, you know, eventually, I'd like to see all our policies go on to our website so that public has access to them.
We don't need a motion.
No.
Sorry, I'm confused. If we're just tabling them, they're just being tabled. Okay. The second policy that we're tabling tonight is called personal information privacy, and it is very specifically related to freedom of information and protection of privacy legislation and the rules around collection, limiting the collection and that kind of thing. So what we'll do then is table them tonight, give you another month to look at them, and we'll approve the rest. Okay? Sorry. Okay, the last item of business is the audit. And I think that we've gone through this quite a few times. It's the committee and the auditors. Two things that we need to deal with. One is the audit itself, so we'll do that first. What I'd like is a motion to approve the audit as presented by the auditors.
I'll make that motion to approve the audited financial statements as presented by Myers, Norris, and Penny.
Seconded? Anne? Any discussion? All in favor? So the complete audit, copies of the complete audit will be at the AGM on Saturday. We've had quite a few conversations with the auditor about the presentation of the audit at the AGM and making it user-friendly so that people can understand, and then he'll be around to respond to questions.
Using this system?
Yes, yes.
We hope so.
Yes. The second part of this report is the auditor's report to the board, which is like in that, it's what they used to call management report. And last year was the first year that the board had received a management report, so this is our second go-around. And as Ruth indicated in her administrative support, there were only 11 adjusting entries, which is huge improvement, and only a couple of those items that they have recommended that we deal with. You'll see that they did not audit the 2011 budget as part of this process, but they have made a number of comments that revenues were overestimated and expenditures underestimated in a number of places. So what I'd like is a motion to accept the management report for information and to instruct the administrator to implement the recommended changes.
I'll make that motion as well to accept the auditor's management report.
I'll listen.
If you want to tack on, you can vote.
Sure.
The administrator.
Sure.
Allen? Any comments from the board about this?
I'd just like to say congratulations to Ruth for doing such a stellar job. And I know that in the, in the letter from the auditors, they had said that, that they had excellent response from her and cooperation and how well the books have been redone. Thank you, Ruth.
Just don't go over that point, otherwise you're going to ask for a pay increase.
I know. I've been through many audits, so, and this is probably the smallest audit I ever had to go through, so it wasn't really daunting, that's for sure.
But you don't mind this?
I think that's what she said. Don't let me delay you.
Mary.
Okay, married, thank you. Okay, so that's the end of the business part of the meeting. Is there a question? Eugene?
Okay. Maybe I'm just being thick and I don't understand, but when we started out in the correspondence, there was a letter from Island Forest.
Island Tyrolean.
I, that one. And that was a reference to the 18 acres for water treatment. And looking like that would be a prospective place where a water treatment plant would be built, which Ubid would purchase.
Yes.
And then under the property assessment request, there was a request to value some property, and I thought I heard water treatment associated with that.
It's where the reservoir is.
Okay, so that's completely separate. It's a different facet of the water treatment. Yeah, so it's not the plant at all. It's just, why are we wanting to value that piece of property? I don't understand that.
Because we want to explore our options for maybe cutting a deal with Kensington. And before we do that, we have to know the value of the properties.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't.
At least not for years.
Really?
Yeah.
And, and the property that we're looking at buying would be for the permanent water treatment plant when that gets built.
So it was before Kensington and the law with that we were leasing from?
Yes.
I was wondering if you could make a correction on your website. You've got Eugene's thing on there about Allen wants to ensure that Union Bay with its failing septic systems gets water treatment. And you know, I responded to that letter, but I noticed you haven't made any correction.
On your website?
No, your website, the TAG website.
That's not an appropriate question for this meeting, Mary.
Well, I have no other way of, you're the leader of TAG, and I can't go to your meetings. So how would I know?
That's inappropriate for this meeting.
When would it be appropriate?
When you talk to a TAG person outside of this meeting.
Oh.
John?
On assessments, we talked, I just triggered my failing memory as well. We had a board, there was a Board of Airence meeting, or not, a day available for Board of Airence.
Yes.
Did anybody show up to that, or did I just miss that?
No, no. It's a legislative requirement that we create the court of revision. Court of revision. Which we did, but no, no one came to appeal their assessment.
Because the scope of our assessments are so small, most people wouldn't have any desire to appeal that assessment.
So is that something we have to make available every year?
Yes, yes.
It's in the legislation.
It's in the local government act.
It hadn't been conducted before, previously, had it?
Well, they were aware of it, but I don't think it, it wasn't structured quite the way that the act says it should be.
Is there any plans to vital the reservoir or to get that and not have to lease it?
From Kensington?
Yeah.
Our understanding at this point is that they're not interested in selling that property because it's all part of a bigger parcel that's part of the development.
So he will control everything and all the water for us? If he wants to, our lease, can he cut our lease off at any time? Or how long is the lease for?
Well, we have a temporary lease right now, but in the water infrastructure agreement, there is a provision for a five-year lease.
With renewal terms. And that's only the temporary side. Until recently, it was essentially just a gentleman's agreement. So.
I thought we all resold it. Just maintain it, that's all.
Yeah, that's right.
I could ultimately tell that the place where the reservoir will go will be up at the top of the hill. That way, the entire system will be pressurized. Right now, the upper houses beyond above the reservoir will have to have their water pumped to them. So ultimately, everything will be pressurized, and we'll get better pressure on Sixth and Seventh Street, which is a bit of an inhibition right now. So it fits along to him.
Any other questions, Eugene?
And maybe it's been answered, and I haven't been in attendance, so excuse me for asking if it is. A couple of meetings ago, we were talking about a computer model that we were going to purchase in relation to infrastructure aging. Is that something that we did go ahead with and are using now, or is that still in the plans?
At the last board meeting, Bill Ellis came and did a little presentation about that. The board made the decision to send that back to the capital planning process.
That video is on, available on YouTube along with Carol explaining about the board's stance on the water transfer agreement. It's, if you can see the whole, the whole thing.
Any other questions? Well, hopefully we'll see you all on Saturday.
I'll be there.